CUNY Board Committee on Finance Administration to order. Thank you all for your patience. We have a long agenda, but with your cooperation, we will get through it. We will take up the following items for approval. Action item 1A is the approval of the minutes of the June 3, 2024 meeting. I move the approval of action item 1A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. We now go to the policy calendar. Policy item 1B1 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Allied Universal Security Services to provide unarmed security and fire guard services to Hunter College. I move the approval of policy item 1B1. Do I have a second? Anybody? Thank you. Any discussion? Any questions? We'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This item is approved. Policy item 1B2 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Dreamland Security Services, Inc., to provide unarmed security guard services at Lehman College. I move the approval of policy item 1B2. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Wait, wait. Sorry, you can't second. Actually, you're not a trustee and you're a non-voting member of the committee, but thank you for that.
Somebody else will second.
Thank you.
Any discussion now? Hearing none? Proceed to a vote. All those in favor? Indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item 1B3 is a resolution to authorize a contract for maintenance with Cone, Inc., to provide elevator, escalator, and other lift equipment maintenance services to John J. College of Criminal Justice. We love elevator contracts. I move to the approval of item 1B3. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item 1B4 is a resolution to authorize a contract with the American Museum of Natural History to provide online science courses at the CUNY School of Professional Studies. I move the approval of item 1B4. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This is a great program. We'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item 1B5 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Attainment Holdco LLC, doing business as InStride, to provide strategic partnership with industry to enroll corporate employees in online programs and courses at the CUNY School of Professional Studies. I move the approval of policy item 1B5. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Any questions? We'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item 1B6 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Elsevier BV for the Science Direct Package. I move the approval of policy item 1B6. Do I have a second? Someone? Oh, thank you. Any discussion? This is one of the things that we have to have, right? This is library access. Proceed to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, this matter is approved. Policy item 1B7, a resolution to authorize the purchase of Nexus for Development Professional Licenses. I move the approval of policy item 1B7. Do I have a second? Please. Thank you. Any questions? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Seeing none, matter is approved. Policy item 1B8 is a resolution to authorize a multi-year service contract for unarmed security and fire guard services for as-needed employment to CUNY campuses. I move the approval of policy item 1B8. Do I have a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion or any questions on this? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, this matter is approved. Policy item 1B9 is a resolution to authorize a contract extension with Alucion. I move the approval of policy item 1B9. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion or any questions? Seeing none? Proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Seeing none, this matter is approved. Policy item 1B10 is a resolution to approve Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee. The October 2024 Personnel Matters Report is generated from employee data entered into the university system of record between April 26, 2024, and September 3, 2024, and does not contain appointments that have been submitted as individual resolutions. The report contains 73 ECP actions, including 23 regular appointments, 17 interim appointments or interim extensions, two title changes, three salary increases, and 28 separations. I move the approval of policy item 1B10. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposition? Any abstentions? Seeing none, this matter is approved. Policy items 1B11 through 1B46 are resolutions to appoint regular and interim members of the Executive Compensation Plan. I will take these up by office, school, or unit. We will be pulling out a few for individual consideration and discussion. If you have any that you want to raise any questions about, just ask, we'll pull them out, and we'll consider them separately. Policy items 1B11 to 1B17 are the central office. David Gomez as Commissioner of the Civil Service System of the City University of New York, Sharon Hardy as University Dean of Admissions and Recruitment, and Han Kit Patel as University Dean of Technology and Computer Information Services, Galia Galansky, Associate Vice Chancellor of University Human Resources, Sanjita Bishop as interim University Dean for Faculty Affairs, Michael Waldman as interim University Dean for Libraries and Information Resources, and Ann Kirshner as a university professor. I move the approval of policy items 1B11 to 1B17. Is there a second? I'm just going to say one thing here. It will come up going along. On interim appointments, the purpose of an interim appointment is a bridge between a permanent appointment and a permanent appointment. We're going to work very hard to make sure that interim appointments are a bridge and that searches are either started or about to start, and if they're not, we would like to know why. There are two interim appointments here. I've been advised that searches have already started for those two people, so it's moving along properly. There are occasions, and we'll get to some of them, when it's really not possible to proceed to a search, and as we get there, we'll discuss those. But it's something I think we have to keep an eye on, and we will continue to do it. So I've made my statement. Is there any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, proceed to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Excuse me. Seeing none, this matter is approved. Policy item 1B18 and 1B19, Borough of Manhattan Community College. Julio Esquero as Vice President of Finance and Administration, and Teresa Wade as interim Executive Legal Counsel and Labor Designee. I move the approval of items 1B18 and 1B19. Do I have a second? Again, I note there's an interim here. We will keep an eye on it. We want to make sure it proceeds to a search and to a permanent appointment. Any other discussion or questions? Proceed to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. 1B20 is Bronx Community College. Octavia Gomez as interim Vice President of Administration. I move the approval of policy item 1B20. Is there a second? Thank you. I'll note here, this is an interim appointment, but there is an interim president there, and we do not make permanent appointments when there's an interim president at this level. So this is going to stay an interim appointment until we can get a president appointed, and then we will proceed as quickly as we can into the search process. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, this matter is approved. Policy item 1B21 to 1B24, Brooklyn College. Paul J. Maswood as the interim dean of the School of Visual Media and Performing Arts, Jacqueline Helms as Executive Legal Counsel, Chief Legal Affairs and Labor Relations Officer, James Lynch as the interim dean of the Coplman School of Business, and Philip Napoli as interim dean, School of Humanities and Social Sciences. Once again, we have three interims. The last one, Philip Napoli, is an extension of an existing interim. The person's already been there for a year. Is there somebody here from Brooklyn College who can answer a question about that?
You have the provosts here to answer. I spoke to.
April? Sure. Can you explain to us why we are extending an interim appointment here? Is there a search in process, or where are we on for Philip Napoli?
For Philip Napoli only. We have asked for a waiver for the search, and the reason is that that particular school of Humanities and Social Sciences has had the most turnover of any of our schools, and he did an excellent job last year as interim dean, and we're waiting for the response to the waiver. If the waiver is denied, then we will begin a search immediately, but we made all of the arguments in the waiver about what an exceptional job he's done. He has the confidence of both the faculty and the administration, which is unusual at Brooklyn College.
When will the administration have a response on whether the waiver is being recommended?
Let's go into the process.
All right. Can we lay, well, can we extend, amend the resolution on Philip Napoli to extend it till after our next meeting? And hopefully by the next meeting, we can make it, the committee can make a determination based on the recommendation we get as to whether the waiver is granted. So this is a short-term extension. I move the amendment. Is there a second for the amendment on Philip Napoli?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, it is amended. We'll now take these four items, the first three and the fourth as amended as a group. It's been seconded. So any further discussion? I move the approval of items 1B21 to 1B24. All those in favor? We've taken the second, but all those in favor? Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Okay, so you know where we are on that. And on the other interims, we're looking to make sure there's progress as they move along, please. College of Staten Island. President Lynch is here. We have Michael Dreher as the interim dean of the School of Health Sciences, Michael Hodge as the interim Vice President for Student Affairs and Strategic Initiatives, and Burnett Joyner as interim dean of the School of Education. These all require extensions. They've all been there since 2022. President Lynch, can you tell us where we are on? I know you've just gotten thrown into this. You're the--
No, certainly, and thank you. There's a sequence of events. I've been named as permanent president. Thank you. We now have a permanent provost in place, and we will be searching for each of these positions, two of which report to the provost, the other which reports to me this academic year.
How much time do you need to complete those searches, do you think?
We would think this academic year, sir.
It's going to take you the full year? You can't do it more quickly than that? Effectively and more quickly?
I certainly wish I could do it more quickly, but perhaps not more effectively in the time that we've got.
Okay. I'll just ask you to come back February, March, and let us know what the process is, you know, how you're proceeding on this, please?
I'll be here.
Okay. I move the approval of policy items 1B25 to 1B27. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. The Graduate Center. We have Susan Piper as Executive Counsel and Labor Designee Administrator, Monica Versani, Associate Provost and Dean of Humanities and Social Sciences, Norman Carey as interim provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs, and Brian Gibney as interim dean for Sciences. I note that Monica Versani is requesting an interim, I'm sorry, is requesting a waiver. She's been interim since 8/22, and Brian Gibney is an extension of an interim appointment. Is anybody here from the Graduate Center?
Yes.
Is Josh here?
Yeah, Brian Peterson.
Hi.
Josh, bring his job, that's why. He's an interim.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. On Monica Versani, you're seeking a waiver. Is there a reason why this hasn't, or isn't going through a search?
Monica has served as the interim for two years, and we're requesting the waiver because of her service, and also we're a little bit like the prior. These four actions are related to the presidential turnover at the Graduate Center. There's kind of a cascading effect. So we would like to appoint Monica as the Associate Provost and Dean through a waiver. Not typical, but given her time and tenure in the role and the terrific job that she is doing leading these areas at the Graduate Center, we would like to move that forward.
What faculty input has there been on that?
There's been faculty input from both the Humanities and Social Sciences, the Art Committee, in consultation with President Brumberg and Norm Carey, our current interim provost.
And where are you on Brian Gibney as interim dean? Is there a search?
There is a search. That search is in the recruitment phase. They're near completing the recruitment phase, and we'll start interviews. I can, Brian is an applicant in that. I don't know how that will play out for him, but that is moving forward as a full search.
Thank you. I move the approval of policy items 1B28 to 1B31. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Anybody have any questions about either of the ones I've raised? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That matter is approved. Thank you. Gutman Community College. We have Mickey Mattos as Vice President for Administration and Finance, and Paul Reifenhizer as provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs. I move the approval of policy items 1B32 to 1B33. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, this matter is approved. We have Ostos Community College, Andrea Fabrizio as interim dean of Academic Affairs. I move the approval of policy item 1B34. Do I have a second? Okay. Once again, it's interim. We're going to keep an eye on this. We want to make sure it moves forward. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, that matter is approved. Policy item 1B35, 1B36 at Hunter College is Julie Garluski as dean of the School of Education, and Colleen Major as chief librarian and dean. I move the approval of policy items 1B35 and 1B36. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Kingsborough Community College, Sharon Warren Cook as interim Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs and Provost. I move the approval of policy item 1B37.
Second.
Second, thank you. Again, this is an interim appointment where there is an interim president, so this is going to stretch out for a while, but we'll keep an eye on it. We'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, that matter is approved. Lehman College, Wesley Pitts as interim dean of Education. I move the approval of policy item 1B38. Is there a second? Again, this is an interim appointment, and we'll have to keep an eye on it, and we will. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That matter is approved. Policy item 1B39. McCauley Honors College, Candace Barnes as Vice President for Advancement. I move the approval of policy item 1B39. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Seeing none, this matter is approved. Policy item 1B40 and 1B41. Medgar Evers College, Zalima Blair as interim dean of the School of Business, and Latoya Blount as dean of student success. I move the approval of policy item 1B40 and 1B41. Is there a second? Again, we have an interim here. We're going to keep an eye on it. There is a permanent president there. It should move forward to a search, through a search. We'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, that matter is approved. Queens College. We have Patrice Price, provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs, John Chin as the interim dean of the Asian American Asian Research Institute, and Dennis Cone as Executive Counsel and Labor Designee. I move the approval of policy items 1B42 to 1B44. Do I have a second? I have a question on Dennis Cone. Is there, is President over here? Thank you.
Good evening.
On Dennis Cone, I am confused as to whether there was a search, or whether you were seeking a search waiver, or neither, or both. Can you tell us where we are with this?
Yes.
Because as I went through the resolutions, it was confusing.
I'm happy to go through it. In one word, both. There was a full national search. We had an extensive pool. We looked at a number of candidates. Mr. Cohen is a veteran lawyer with more than a quarter century of experience in the public sector. It would be just terrific hire. He was a clear first choice. In the negotiation process, it turns out that commensurate with his experience, he desired a salary slightly above the advertised range. Because of the pay transparency law, which is a relatively new law, it is not possible for us then to appoint him at the salary below which he just won't go. He's actually taking a pay cut to come work with us. So we had a full national search. We selected the clear number-one candidate, and in the negotiation process, the salary that we arrived at is just a little bit above the advertised range, and we are compelled then to ask for a search waiver just due to the need to comply with the law. We are now well aware that there are no exceptions, even if it's just a few thousand more, and we will be much more mindful in the future when we advertise salaries.
I guess my only question is, if a higher salary had been advertised, do you think you would have gotten additional candidates?
Highly unlikely, because the amount is trivial.
Any other questions? Comments? Thoughts? Okay. Thank you, President.
Thank you.
We've moved and seconded this. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item 1B45. Queensborough Community College, Linda Bastone as dean of the faculty. I move the approval of policy item 1B45. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item 1B46, the School of Professional Studies and the School of Public Health and Health Policy. Donna Cantfield as Executive Counsel and Labor Designee, a doubleheader. I move the approval of policy item 1B46. Is there a second? Do I have a second? Any discussion or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. This matter is approved. With no more items on the policy calendar, I will address Section 2, which is information items, and there's one item on the agenda. Item 2A is the Fiscal Year 2024 Preliminary Year-end Financial Update. Senior Vice Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer, Sharif Solomon, will report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have about four slides to run through, just to give you a picture of the Fiscal 2024 Preliminary Year-end Report, and it is preliminary because there are still some actions to close out with the fiscal year, and then we'll have a final report thereafter. And we will go into one as the slides are up.
That's a pretty dark fiscal picture.
Yeah. That's fiscal future. Fiscal future is bleak.
Thank you. So you've seen the versions of this slide before that show sort of progress on the structural deficit. You see there in fiscal 2022, at the high mark, we were at $234 million. We were successful in bringing that down for the preliminary year end to $70 million. And you see there that it does not include the cost of a yet-to-be-settled PSC contract. Negotiations continue. We are not carrying that as an obligation now, but certainly when the contract is settled, the question of funding for the contract will be factored into the financial plans. This obviously was the product of a number of actions taken university-wide. You see there at the bottom of the slide, between a hire and freeze, between savings targets across the board, between our Phase 2 of really trying to focus on colleges of high financial concern. So we were able to bring it down to $70 million. And I think the factors that are leading into that, a few things to highlight. Number one, as I mentioned, additional expense reduction strategies, not only at the colleges of high financial concern, but also at other colleges. So you see in the report that there's an overall 1% decline in expenditures year over year. A second main factor, fortunate enough to see that our enrollment was slightly higher at 3% university-wide. That translated into a collection of tuition revenue of 4% higher, or $52 million. I would note that although we're seeing tuition revenue at $52 million, which is positive, we are still $133 million off where we were in fiscal 2019 before the pandemic. So we're not out of the woods yet, but certainly the $52 million and the uptick in enrollment is certainly a positive. The next, I would say, and we're extremely thankful to our state leaders, from the governor and the state legislature, for additional general operating aid, which certainly helped college balances, and certainly for the senior colleges, but also for the community colleges. The continuation of the 100% funding floor for community colleges was a significant factor in fiscal 24 for maintaining stability and for the reduction in the structural deficit. As you know, we led with a strategy to have collective bargaining costs for DC 37 and the classified staff contract for the senior colleges. The state, in the last enacted budget, came through with funding for the retro pay and for the bonus, and that also helped fund those costs for fiscal 24, which also helped. So all of these factors lead to an $84 million reduction year over year in the structural deficit. Certainly more to do, but trending in the right direction, and good news and positive performance. So when you look at some other highlights, all of the nine colleges of high financial concern were able to reduce their structural deficit year over year, which is certainly positive news. Some more than others, and there's still some work to do, but we saw a lot of positive movement and cooperation with each of these campuses and the presidents, and you'll see in the numbers that each of them were able to reduce their structural deficit. Overall, another positive highlight, 13 colleges per-- Overall, another positive highlight, 13 colleges projected to end the year with a structural deficit. That's down from 21 at the mid-year, right? So, again, still work to do, but the numbers are going in the right direction, and we're committed to continuing to work with campuses and exploring not only opportunities at the campus level, but also university-wide. And then lastly, we do have four colleges that are projected to end the year with a cash deficit, down from six in the mid-year, which is positive, but we certainly don't want to see any colleges that are projected to end the year with a cash deficit. Thanks to the action that you have taken, you've approved a university-wide strategy to be able to step in and help those campuses by handling those cash deficits. As we go into the second year of that strategy, we'll be able to continue to work with those campuses to get them into balance, but we thank the board for that support. And then lastly, I think another thing to point out, when you look at the year-end balances, you'll see that most colleges have reserve balances, which is certainly positive news. As you know, we were fortunate to have federal stimulus funds. Those federal stimulus funds, one of the permissible uses was to allow for coverage of lost revenue. So, we were able to use those stimulus funds and exhaust all of them in fiscal 24, so no more stimulus funds. But what that meant was, some resources at the college level were able to be used or be placed into reserve balances. So, we're looking at what those reserve balances are across the university. In some cases, we'll work with some of the campuses that have higher reserve balances to turn the dial a little bit and have a strategy on how to have a prudent spending plan, to invest, in some cases, to rebuild what was lost, right? From the expense constraints, in other cases, of course, we continually want to make investments. So, we will be working very closely with those campuses to have a prudent spending plan and drawdown of some of those funds. Again, key word prudent, to make sure that we're not taking one-time expenses and focusing too much on recurring expenses, I mean, one-time balances and focusing too much on recurring expenses. So, we want to be careful there, but certainly positive news that many colleges have reserve balances. So, those are some of the highlights. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
There is a question.
Well, I just want to say that I think this is a remarkable accomplishment. I mean, there's a lot of work yet to be done, but I think that this has been a gigantic crisis, and to find our way through this as well as we have is, I think, very remarkable. I think, though, that when we look at our first quarter report for this year, we'll then see the effect of some of the measures that were necessary at the campuses to accomplish this. We're going to see changes in employment all across areas and other kinds of changes. And looking, you know, looking across the campuses, there's a wide variety of different kinds of measures that have been taken, and so this was not painless, and I think we all know that, but I think that it's remarkable that we've gotten as far as we've gotten. And so, that's a question. I know I'm not allowed to make a comment.
You have anything to say on that? Because, I mean, you know...
Thank you.
Appreciative of the statement. I think also, an added benefit, I think, is that that roadmap allows us to now have tools to better continue with the things that require discipline, right, as we continue the road ahead? Because as our CFO mentioned, we're not out of the woods yet, and that varies campus by campus, but I think the strategy allows us to have a better roadmap moving forward. As you said, at the beginning of the quarter, we'll also be able to see some things that are not quite there yet. So far, the enrollment projection is about 3% increase for the fall, right? So, that should be reflected, should that be kept? Some of those numbers do not reflect the enrollment of the later part of the summer, right, which, you know, also had a 3% increase. So, hopefully, some of those things, I think many of our campuses have also stepped up on the collections rate, which is an important component moving forward. So, appreciative of the recognition, and I also give my kudos to our CFO, his team, and also to the campus president. But we still have to remain vigilant, which I echo your comments, but I do think that with that roadmap, we have better tools to be able to remain in a more solid track.
Can I ask a question? Just to that, okay. No, I was just going to comment you made, Chancellor, when you said doing better on collections, and is collection of fees or, I mean, collection of...
Tuition.
Tuition?
Tuition, yeah.
Okay. I thought so, but I didn't want to assume.
Yeah, I would add that the collections rate year over year was higher by 0.6%, which is, which is good.
And that's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money.
I mean, 0.6 might seem small, but...
No, it's not.
Better than the MTA, but last year, one of the tools was directed savings targets to the campuses from the university, and I haven't heard whether that's going to be continued this year with certain percentage amount savings in the financial plans.
Sure, happy to take that. The, as you know, yes, there are savings targets or deficit reduction targets for the nine colleges of high financial concern. Based on these balances, again, I think the chancellor mentioned, we want to see where enrollment is going to land. We want to see what the Q1 numbers are for fiscal '25, and then what we want to do is to reevaluate, based on the objective criteria that we established for whether a college is placed on the high-concern list or not, run them through the objective criteria, and then be able to develop a plan to see who may, which entity that is, may need to come off the list. Those that are remaining have a deficit reduction target for year two of this two-year strategy. So, it is expected that that target is met for whichever institution remains on the
I sometimes fear that we come across as being a little too optimistic. We still have significant financial problems, and as Professor Benton said, we really have to look at not only our successes, but what has cost us academically, administratively, professionally. And, you know, we're so far behind in terms of city funding for the community colleges, and, you know, we've been able to tighten our belt, but sometimes you tighten your belt so much that you can't breathe, and, you know, I think we've got to keep a real eye on it, and we've got to be looking at, you know, this is where we are, and it's better than where we were, but it's not where we want to be. And I think we certainly have to continue to look for the funding to make all of our schools what they can be, but what they're struggling with right now. And, senior vice chancellor, I thank you for the presentation. Sometimes you're, you know, a little bit too optimistic, because we are making progress, but we still have some very serious problems.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I can...
Angela.
Oh, Angela.
The problem is multilateral. I mean, it's not only funding, it's tuition, it's cutting back. Which area do you think is the most crucial for something to make a change?
All of the above.
Well, I think it's multifaceted, right? So, number one, I think, as the chair alluded to, we still face significant pegs from the City of New York for the community colleges, right? So, we were fortunate enough in the last budget that there was a one-time restoration of $15 million. There was a lot of funding that came into programs that we all care about, and, but those pegs return to $95 million and are baselines for the out years, right? So, that's an ongoing concern. Clearly, when you look at the last few years, state support has been significant, and that's really helped our senior colleges. We're going to go into, obviously, we're in the cycle now of being able to formulate a budget request and come to talk to you about a budget request, and clearly, there are a whole raft of mandatory needs that we have. Clearly, what happens with the labor funding is a question. We also have significant, just mandatory costs that we incur every year that the university has had to absorb, whether it's from inflationary increases, or salary increments, or other mandatory costs where funding hasn't flowed. So, that's always an ongoing concern, and clearly enrollment. I mean, enrollment does translate into significant revenue, so, I mean, the team has just been laser-focused on trying to, you know, overcome the challenges with the FAFSA shock to the system, right? And so, all eyes are on enrollment to see where we're going to end up, because that plays such a big picture. And we have a bunch of strategies on how to improve collections and other things, but clearly, it's multifaceted. We need all of these areas to be firing on all pistons to really be able to achieve fiscal stability.
Thank you for the answer. I understand multifaceted, but to me, what I'm getting is that enrollment is probably the key above everything else, because those other things you can manage if you have to make cuts, or you have to try to get more money from the city, from the state, but enrollment and encouraging more people to enroll.
Absolutely.
And they're doing, well, we had a meeting earlier, and they're doing an excellent job in trying to recruit and get people back. So, I like the positive attitude. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
Yeah, two questions. As part of our strategy, you know, do we incent colleges or disincent them less if they have higher enrollments than anticipated? Is there correlation between enrollment and the size of the savings or the cost-cutting measures per university? So, that's one.
Well, on that one, I mean, we've, what we've done in terms of allocations with the latest rounds of funding that we've received from the state, for example, we've allocated based on FTE, on full-time equivalent enrollment. So, we've really endeavored to put money where the students are, right? So, if you view it in that way, right? And then clearly, in our strategy of colleges of high financial concern, what really is going to make or break a college's financials, right? Is enrollment continuing to decline, or is it on an upswing, right? And so, the expense reduction piece of this comes into play if enrollment isn't panning out, because your finances are going to lag, and then we have to step in with those interventions. So, those are a couple of ways that enrollment factors into how we're dealing with colleges' balances.
And my second question was, I, just from what I, from where I sit and what I hear, I don't think that there's going to be restoration of pegs from the city perspective, and the state increases were very targeted for the collective bargaining, which was really good, but I don't see any additional funds coming in, you know, or I can anticipate that, just if you read a few T-leads, right? Anticipating that, what are going to be some of the internal reductions that we would make just in anticipation that those additional revenues may not be there? And by the way, stay optimistic.
Yes, of course, of course.
I don't care what he says.
I think, I think that, so there are a number of strategies that we have put forward to address sort of the expense reduction side. Obviously, on the revenue generation side, all the efforts on enrollment, all the advocacy at the state and city level. But on the expense reduction side, what we have is the college of high financial concern, which we have constraints. If you're on that list, it means you're a two-for-one high in restriction, and you have a deficit reduction target, right? So, at the campus level, those are the tools, right? But we said, we're not only asking the colleges, right? We have university-wide strategies, and those university-wide strategies are more shared services. When we talk about, you know, for example, additional ways to centralize IT functions, take that off of the colleges' books, right? Additional ways, so that we can have collections efforts that really try to leverage technology to, again, alleviate the colleges of some of those tasks, right? Procurement, more centralized contracts, so that CUNY is negotiating with one voice and not having the campuses negotiate each contract there. So, those, that's just a sample of some of the strategies that we're doing on the expense reduction side, to, again, to weather the storm, right? If the funding doesn't come through, if the state support and city support doesn't continue to go, you know, at the levels that we've seen.
Is there a central reduction plan that is commensurate with the university and colleges' reduction plan? I mean, is that part of the equation also?
Absolutely. I mean, I think when you look at what was in the last go-round, right, there was, across the board, 5.5% to 7% cuts. The central office also had that particular cut as well. I believe the number was $6.5 million, which was a savings target and reduction that the central office has taken, right? So, yes, we're always looking for ways to manage, we're always looking for ways to help the colleges in shared services, but also, you know, keeping a watchful eye on the central.
It's an important balanced view, especially for public consumption. I mean, it's critical. No more questions, sir.
Trusty sunshine.
Well, I mean, just to be extremely pessimistic, there's an election going on, and, you know, we've got to be prepared for two outcomes, not only the presidential, but on the House and the Senate side, and we should prepare for the worst, hoping that it is not the worst, because the implications of, you know, major change in Washington on legislative and executive level could be catastrophic for New York, it could be catastrophic for urban America, and it certainly could be catastrophic for education. So, that's got to be in the equation. I'm sure you're thinking of it, but...
Absolutely. Thank you.
I love the pessimism.
Right, remind us.
Is there anything further? And I'm proud to say, there being nothing else on the agenda, I move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Yes, right.
Any opposed? Any...
Yeah, I...
We're adjourned. For those who...
We have another meeting.
I know.